You ready at the, okay, let's call a common council meeting to order at 6:01 PM. We have a roll call, all alderpersons are present. Next item is pledge allegiance and silent prayer. Explanation of visitor speaking procedures while we do not have any visitors this evening, so we do not need to have any explanation tonight. The next item is oath of office for the mayor.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I Shane E. Blazer.
I Shane E. Blazer.
Having been duly elected.
Having been duly elected.
To serve as mayor.
To serve as mayor.
For the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
To serve as, for the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Wisconsin.
And of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of set office.
The duties of set office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
There you go.[114.53][114.53](applause).
All right. Next would be the alderman's oath of office for District 2, 4, 6, and 8.
Can I just stand here?
Whatever's comfortable. Flags falling on you?
It is.
Oh, it stopped.
All right.
Would it be?
(inaudible) plans to issue an executive order to temporarily suspend immigration for 60 days. Says it will only affect those seeking permanent residency, not those entering on a temporary basis. CBS News legal analyst, Thane Rosenbaum. Can I come on in so we can hear on the microphone? All righty. And let's have you guys all stand here so, face me, so they can see on the cameras. So, everybody in the line over here?
Go.
Do you want to go over here, Dean?
Go.
Over here? There you go. Oh, that's right, you got to be far apart here. We'll just do this. All right. Please raise your right hands and repeat after me. I, and then state your names. Having been duly elected to serve.
Having been duly elected to serve.
As alderperson for the, and then state your district.
As alderperson for District 2.
For the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
The city of Wisconsin Rapids.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Wisconsin.
And of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of set office.
The duties of set office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.[231.56][231.56](applause).
Our next item of business is the election of a common council president.
I'll nominate alderperson Thad Kubaschak.
I'll accept.
We have a nomination for alderperson Kubaschak. Is there any other nominations? Okay, we have another nomination for alderperson Steve Coath. So we'll need some ballots.
Yep.
Um, yeah, is there any other nominations?
This is the only vote that you're able to take that is actually a secret ballot, so you don't need to put your district or number or anything on it, you would just put the name of the gentleman that you are voting for.
Don't wait to see what getting over 10 servings of whole fruits and vegetables every day can do for you. Right now Balance of Nature is offering free shipping and 35% off on any new preferred order. Start your journey to better health today by calling 1-800-246-8751 by going to balanceofnature.com.
Again, that's Balance of Nature. Okay, we have a vote for alderperson Kubaschak. Another vote for Kubaschak. Another vote for Kubaschak. A vote for Coath. Another vote for Coath. Vote for Kubaschak. Vote for Kubaschak. And a vote for Coath. So the vote is five for alderperson Kubaschak and three for Coath. So, congratulations, alderperson Kubaschak.
Next item is the election of an alderperson to the planning commission to serve a term expiring May 1st, 2021. I'd entertain any nominations.
I'm sorry, who did you nominate?
Jay Bemke. Do we have any other nominations? So we have no other nominations? I'd entertain a motion for unanimous consent.
Make a motion for unanimous consent for Jay Bemke for the planning commission.
So we have a motion by Mr. Coath.
I'll second.
Do you want us to hit our buttons? Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Cast your ballots. Correct. Do you apologize, Dean and Jay, do you know how to?
They got it.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, the motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Congratulations, Mr. Bemke. My appointment to the Park and Rec Commission, I've spoken to Mr. Tom Raume, and he's agreed to serve as my appointment to that commission for this year. Thank you. The next item would be the election of an alderperson to serve as an alternate on the Ethics Board for the term which expires in November 20 of '21, which I believe is my spot that I held. They meet twice a year, I think, usually unless there's a problem.
Yeah, and I'd like to nominate alderperson Dean Veneman.
I'll nominate alderperson Jake Catna.
Are there any other nominations? All right, if you want to cast your ballots, do everybody have enough paper? Or?
(inaudible).
Oh. Right. Why don't we do that? So.
Okay. Vote aye for Veneman and nay for Catna.
Really?
It's tied. Should I flip a coin?
Yeah.
We're coin flips, okay?
(laughing).
Why did you give him a better end than that?
I make a motion for arm wrestle.
Somebody want to flip a coin, or?
Vote again, and if it's still tied, then figure something else out.
The mayor can break a tie for appointments to commissions, commissions, and boards. So if you wish to do that, you can. I forgot about that.
I guess we'll go with the experienced guy this time. So congratulations, Mr. Catna. Make a decision and move on. The next item is the election of an alderperson to serve on the Water Works and Lighting Commission. It's for a one-year term. Do I? Do we have any other motion, or any other nominations? All right, so I'd entertain a motion for unanimous consent.
So moved.
So moved.
So have a motion? Oh, okay. Please cast your ballots, or when you're ready.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Congratulations, Mr. Coath. Next item would be my appointments to standing committees. We're on the Public Works Committee, we have Tom Raume, Jake Catna, and Dean Veneman. The Finance Committee, I have Steve Coath, Thad Kubaschak, Scott Kellogg. The Human Resource Committee, Joe Zerflu, Jay Bemke, and Thad Kubaschak agreed to be on two committees. Anybody need those repeated? So if you gentlemen could get together and determine a chairperson.
Can I, can I make a comment? It'd be interesting if we could meet with our committees as a whole rather than on computers and so forth, and this room isn't used on Monday nights, Tuesday nights, Thursday nights, or Friday nights, we wouldn't be probably meeting. But it would be interesting if you had our committees here and utilized this room to the max, and then you could have the three councilmen, and then you could, if you had audience, you could set aside the chairs so they're six feet apart. But rather than meeting in the conference rooms that we have now, and it'd be difficult to have visitors, and this, I think, would be advantageous. It's something to think about, so when the committees meet, they may want to think about, because Tuesdays would be available, from what I know, my knowledge, available for this room. So something to think about.
Thank you. So, yeah, if you want to get together in your committees and decide chairperson, secretary, and also, is it Finance and Human Resource, need a member of the ADA committee? Which has not met in a couple of years, so. (laughing) It's a decade. So, but we still need, as of currently, until we can address that later on in the future. So if you guys want to meet?
Do you have masks? If anybody wants them?
(inaudible).
(inaudible).
And, 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 and,
So we have a motion and a second to adopt the resolutions. Resolution. Any questions or comments? Let's vote. Oh, hold on. Mr. Uh, Jay Bemke, did you have a question? I just got it right at the end there.
I do have a question, and I don't know if we can act on this tonight or if it has to be sent back to committee, but, um, not that well versed in this, but it, it has been brought to my attention that some of the employees have been left out on some of the family medical leave stuff. Some groups are entitled to one week, some groups are entitled for childcare. And childcare has gotten to be an issue because no school, um, the daycares are out, or the daycares are, are full. I guess, um, is that something we could look at tonight, extending to everybody the two weeks?
Um, well, the, the two weeks, which two weeks? There, there is the two weeks that, um, of the city leave from a month ago or so. Okay, so you're not talking about those two weeks? That applies to everybody. That includes childcare. And then there's the federal, um, Family First Act, which is, um, two weeks of paid leave and then extended family leave for 12 weeks. So.
How much, how much leave are the employees able to use for childcare, specifically for childcare?
Um, well, which employees?
Uh, let's say, for example, the city garage.
Okay. They would be entitled to the, one week of the two. There's a ma- you can only, out of, out of the city leave, you can only use up to one week of the two weeks for childcare. And that's paid at, you know, your regular salary. And the, for the garage is exempted from the federal act, um, for the paid leave and the extended family leave.
So they're entitled to one week under the policy now?
Right. Plus, they, they can use any other accrued leave that they have. Vacation, you know? Right.
Okay.
Personal, time, um.
I, I think, maybe, so what we need to do is maybe address this in a committee meeting and work through this so we're all on the same page. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So we have a motion and a second. Um, cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Next item is to consider requesting Wood County adopt a resolution which would allow the city to waive interest and penalties for installment payments on property taxes due or payable after April 1st, 2020, as long as the total amount is paid before October 1st, 2020. With that waiver being available to all property taxpayer, taxpayers because of economic hardship due to COVID-19.
I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Mr. Coth and a second by Mr. Kellogg. Tim's not here. Do, I know a little bit.
This, this is something that the, the county first has to pass the resolution and then the city would. So this would come back if the county does pass a resolution. I am told that they probably wouldn't, but I think, I, I think it was important to, that the city decide whether this is something they want to do and, and then ask the county to do it. And if the county doesn't want to do it, then we can explain to our citizens that it was something we wanted to do, but we, you know, we couldn't. So I guess to just encourage, uh, you know, for you to determine whether it's something you, you want to request of the county or not. But like I said, the county has to pass a resolution and they're probably not going to get to it until May. So, and I don't know if Tim has anything further to add.
Sorry, Mr. Raum?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, I don't have a problem with asking the county to do that. Um, I, I've only, I've had one call on it, and I think, and it's been from, uh, actually a landlord, uh, about that. Um, but, uh, in our, in the wording of the, um, agenda, I think, I, and I think if we look at our attachment that we got, uh, there's two ways to go on this. Or it can be a case, case-by-case waiver and that. And the problem I have with that, which they recommend against, the problem I have, it, it is, in the wording of it, it says we have because of economic hardship. So that's someone leaning the other way of a ca- towards a case-by-case. Where in the other, the, in the general term, the general way is that it's just, it'd just be granted. Nobody has to apply for it, it'd just be granted. And they'd ha- they'd have to pay it by, by October 1st. To, so they wouldn't have to pay the penalty. So it's just, uh, I think, so we're all in tune with it because to me, there's somewhat of contradiction in the, in the wording in our agenda of that with the economic hardship, because what we're really asking for, I think, anyway, is that it's just open to all. At least that's my understanding of what we're doing. That we're, that we're requesting. We're asking, uh, uh, county to do this, but we're asking them to also go along with that, it's just in general for everybody, so.
Right, that's correct.
Just, just so everybody, so we all understand it, that's all.
Right, we would be recommending not to do the case-by-case, but to do it as a general. But I think it's just added in there that the reason, the reason for the, for doing the waivers of the penalty and interest is because of the economic hardship that generally everyone is experiencing, so. But right, it is, there's a clear distinction there that it, it is going to be just for, it, we're not gonna, it's gonna be for everybody or available to everyone and not a case-by-case.
Uh, Mr. Kubaschak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, to kind of speak on Mr. Raum's, uh, comment there, I see what you're saying after I'm rereading this, but when I read it first, I guess I didn't see a conflict there. When I seen the words economic hardship, I guess I, I seen it in general, the masses. So I, as far as I'm concerned, um, I, i- i- and again, after reading it and then putting your words, your concept into it, I can see how there could be, you know, mis- uh, misinterpretation of this. But I think, like what the city attorney has said, once, we're petitioning the county to do this, but then we ultimately have to come back and then redo it anyway, you know, if and when the county does it, so.
Mr. Veneman? Do we need?
Um, so I, I guess, Sue, why did you say that they won't be working on this till at least May? They don't meet again this month?
Uh, right, because I think they were meeting today. Is that right? Council, county board probably met today. And, uh, by the time that this got to them, it, uh, they, they were advised that they needed to take it to a committee and the committee wouldn't be meeting, and so they basically said it wouldn't be till.
Yeah, 'cause then installments are done on, due on the 31st, or 30th, there's only 30 days.
That's, that's right. Um, it, it can be retroactive, um, but that's not really of any help to someone deciding whether to pay, need, whether they need to pay on April 30th or not. But, you know, I guess there's the July 31 installment too that could be affected.
Okay.
But, and I, Tim is, Tim is.
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yep. Yes.
Um, well, basic, basically, uh, Wood County wouldn't be taking this up, so, uh, they're may meeting if they considered it. Um, basically, what would happen is that any installment is due after April 1st, um, would not accrue interest if they went delinquent at, at, on either their April 30th installment or July 31st installment until October 1st. On October 1st, then it would start accruing interest at 1% per month. Um, the county, uh, we would settle with the county, obviously, after our April 30th installment, um, on, and then obviously after, or July 31st installment, we'd settle with the county. And then the county would have to settle any outstanding taxes on September 20th. Now, I've, I've been in contact with, uh, the county treasurer and there are some concerns, just to voice their concerns that they expressed to me, is any, uh, taxes that are delinquent as of now, uh, would still accrue interest. It's only ones that went delinquent after April 1st. Um, so, um, right now, our tax collections are probably a little bit ahead of, of last year. We've collected 76.3% of our tax roll. So this is just something that, uh, we might want to consider. Obviously, the county would have to adopt it. I don't want to speak for the county. I mean, they have different cash flow concerns, uh, with, you know, um, obviously having to pay out some of that stuff ahead of time. Um, the school districts expect, you know, some, uh, cash flow, the mid-state and such. And obviously, you know, with the county being, you know, about 9%, about approximately $6 million of sales tax, which is obviously being impacted by, uh, the COVID-19, uh, they might have some cash flow concerns. But I think it's something that we should consider. Obviously, um, the county would have to consider it and pass it first before we, uh, would bring back a resolution for your consideration.
Thank you, Tim. Anybody have any questions for him? Uh, you, you through, Mr. Veneman? Did you have a?
My question was for Tim, but he answered it, so.
Okay, if nobody has anything further, we have a motion and a second to, uh, request the county to consider passing a resolution. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Thank you very much. Next item is Alderperson's Coth, Alderperson Coth's motion to renew the common council's previous consideration of the Southwood County Airport Commission's petition for direct annexation by unanimous approval of the Alexander Field Airport Terminal and surrounding property to the city of Wisconsin Rapids. Mr. Coth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just for everybody here that's a council, when this was come before the council in February, um, I voted it down. And reason I voted it down was because I wanted to make sure that as a city, we weren't going to do anything to potentially hurt a neighboring municipality. And I want to make sure I had everything, um, that I need to know about it before I, I cast a vote of that nature. Cause found it's easier to go back and take another vote on something as opposed to approve something and try to undo what's done. Um, I've asked a lot of questions about it, um, in the time that we've now had since this has been out. And, um, one of the things I was concerned about initially in my no vote was whenever, whenever there's new construction, a municipality, to what I understand, gets credit on that for their tax base as a, as a form of new construction. I want to make sure that that was something that we were not going to take away from, from Grand Rapids for any credit for new, new construction on a, on a hangar that's going to cost a couple million dollars to build. Because of the nature of this property, what I found is that this will not affect tax base either way for either the township of Grand Rapids or the city of Wisconsin Rapids. It's, it's very, it's very neutral in how it would affect anything, so it's not gonna, it's not gonna give the city of Wisconsin Rapids an advantage, and it's not going to give the township of Grand Rapids a disadvantage. And then also, in looking at this a lot further, it's also in our municipal code under 5.11, that if we are to extend the city services beyond the limit of the corporate boundary, um, the only way that is done is through the annexation process. I know that, uh, there was representative from the town board of Grand Rapids here who would ask us numerous times to not do the annexation, but do the intergovernmental agreement. And I'd asked about that, and what I'd found is if anyone did want to intergovernmental agreement, it would be the responsibility of the governing body of the township or municipal body that's asking for it, for their, their municipal attorney to put something forward, that intergovernmental agreement to be in place. And that was never presented to us for consideration, which is why I wanted to have this come back for reconsideration, uh, by the council, uh, for the annexation of the property. That's all I, I guess I would conclude by saying I would make a motion to approve the annexation has previously presented.
Yeah, I, first, we would do, actually, your, your motion to renew, which is what you're basically saying, is you, you want to have this considered again. So first, the first threshold would be to see if every, anyone else wants to have it reconsidered. And then you would get to, if that was successful, then you would get to approving the annexation. So this would simply be a, a motion to, um, renew, um, basically the discussion or the action on the, the annexation.
All right, so until that goes through, I will withdraw the motion I made at the end of my comments.
Then, then you could make, but then you could make a motion to basically renew, renew the discussion, renew the, the action. Or bring it before the body again, basically.
Understood.
Mr. Kubaschak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Ms. City Attorney, um, can you offer clarification on the reconsideration process like this? Because it has to be done from someone from the prevailing side, is that correct?
No. That is not correct for a motion to renew. For a motion to, um, reconsider, which happens at the same meeting, that would have to be somebody that wanted to, uh, would be, wanted to change their vote. But a motion to renew, uh, it's, it can be, anybody can bring that.
So for clar- I mean, it, cause I don't care what, I mean, it, whoever makes the motion. But in, in terms of this, I guess I've never seen like a consideration for renewal. I don't know what that means.
Okay. Well, whenever you, um, uh, whenever you have something that, um, when something is defeated, okay? So you, you have an action that wasn't taken, something was defeated, um, you don't, you don't reconsider the negative or the, the denial of it. So that's why when you have something that's defeated, it's actually a motion to renew. You want to bring it back again. If it was, something was approved, if something was approved and then you, um, someone wanted it defeated, then that would be a motion, a motion to reconsider. And, um, so I guess that's the difference of what you're calling it. Depends whether the action is, is, um, been denied and you want it to be reconsidered again, or it's defeated, or I'm sorry, it was approved and you want it to be. I, I can get you a, I, I know I did a memo on this the last time we, we did this, um, and I can find it for you right now.
Yeah. I'm not challenging anything, I'm just, uh, trying to, um, absorb it. And so realistically, we're not looking at yays versus nays in terms of who voting, who voted for it. What you're saying is that a reconsideration would only happen if there was a change to the status quo. And it doesn't have to be, yes, we, we adopted a new ordinance, it would be kind of like changing an ordinance or creating a new policy. But with this, what you're saying is that something can be voted down, meeting after meeting after meeting. As long as it's voted down, it isn't a reconsideration because there was no consideration made in the first place. So therefore, it isn't specifically the ye or the na. And that's the, the reason why I want clarification on this is because this required a supermajority. So technically, the prevailing side was actually the voting it down. But if this, because it's not a reconsideration, because nothing changed, the status quo didn't change, then it wouldn't be a reconsideration.
Well, I, so you're agreeing with me or you still want?
Well, I, I think I, I'm, I'm asking if, if that does sound like I am.
Okay, let me, let me find by the memo on it.
It's like, I, I, what, what I don't want to do is make a suggestion that I'm trying to block this process, cause it, there's gonna be, it, there, there's people on the prevailing side, and then there's people on the non-pervailing side. But because this wasn't a, a change from the status quo of whatever something was, then it's, then it would be this renewal process, I guess. And it wouldn't even be a renewal, it would just be a, a. And it wouldn't even be a renewal, it would just be a new consideration, not a reconsideration. Is my mic on? Can you hear me now? I always have a challenge, because somehow, I don't know if I've got a speech impediment or something, but I always, I bump the mic and it's so loud.
Okay, I think I misspoke when I first said the motion to reconsider is something that's done at that meeting and it has to be made by a member who voted on the prevailing side, so that was correct. And then when I talked again about something not being voted down versus voted, that would be a motion to rescind. If you affirmatively did something and wanted to change your mind, that would be a motion to rescind. So, under Roberts' Rules of Order, which the city council has adopted, there are three ways a municipal governing body can bring a question back before it. The first way is a motion to reconsider. A motion to reconsider can bring back further consideration, a motion upon which a vote has already been taken. The motion to reconsider must be made by a member who voted on the prevailing side and must be made on the same day the vote on the original motion is taken. So, this option is not available this evening. The second way is a motion to rescind. A motion to rescind is a motion by which a previous action can be repealed. Thus, the effect of such a motion is canceling or striking out of a motion that has been previously adopted. In contrast to a motion for reconsideration, a motion to rescind can be made by any member of the governing body, regardless of how that member voted on the original motion. A motion to rescind also differs from a motion to reconsider in that an affirmative vote on a motion to rescind does not bring the original motion back before the body for further debate, rather, it immediately nullifies the original motion. Thus, a motion to rescind will not bring back the original annexation petition for hearing. Motions to rescind are generally appropriate for affirmative motions when something was approved or adopted, which isn't what happened in the instant case. The third way is a motion to renew. Under Roberts, if a motion is made, but the requested action is defeated and not adopted, a motion may be renewed by any member at any subsequent meeting. Since direct annexation petitions for unanimous consent have no time limits within which to be considered, a motion to renew would be timely. So, that's, those are the three, so this is a motion to renew. A motion was, a requested action was defeated and not adopted, and then he's bringing a motion to renew by any member at a subsequent meeting.
So, Mr. Coath, you could actually have your motion then on the floor.
The motion to renew.
Yeah.
Exactly, and that's what I was trying, I apologize if that was confusing. I thought he first did the motion to approve the annexation. And so, I was saying first, we need to renew and then we go to the annexation.
This time, I would like to make a motion to renew consideration for annexation of the Southwood County Airport property.
I'll second his motion.
So, we have a motion by Coath, seconded by Kellogg. Yeah, and so we have a motion and a second by Mr. Coath to renew the airport annexation. Ready to vote? All in favor, vote.
Motion carried, seven ayes, one abstention.
For one nay.
Yep. Did you?
Yeah, hit the nay, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. Nope, I read it wrong. Motion carried, seven ayes, one nay.
So, our next item then, since we are renewing, the motion to renew is approved, consider approval of the Southwood County Airport Commission's petition for direct annexation by unanimous approval of the Alexander Field Airport Terminal and surrounding property. Entertaining a motion on that.
I'll move to approve.
Mr. Zerflu made a motion. And is there a second? We have a second by Mr. Coath, and we have Mr. Katnau, who would like to speak.
So, earlier, as it discussed about an intergovernmental agreement, this is not part of that, this would just be direct annexation, correct? So, either we would vote up to annex or not, there is no option to do an intergovernmental agreement.
Okay, correct.
Yeah, I'd just like to add that due to city ordinance, I don't think an intergovernmental agreement would be appropriate. And as was already discussed, one has not been brought forth. If the hangar is going to be built, then my opinion is this is the way that the hangar would be built. And that's all I have to add on that.
Mr. Coath?
I can cancel that.
Excuse me?
I'll cancel my request.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kellogg?
I was in favor of this in the previous voting, and this was passed by the airport, which has representation from the other communities. And I have not heard anything that would convince me why we shouldn't do this. If we don't do this, it's going to be quite a costly undertaking, from my understanding. It's going to be a costly undertaking for the airport of digging a well, thousands of dollars and so forth. And since it was passed by the commission representing the different communities, and going back to what Mr. Coath mentioned, I don't think it's a disadvantage for the two communities, for example. If somebody's voting no, I guess I would like to have them explain to me why, so maybe enlighten me. But unless somebody really enlightens me, I'm going to vote for it, so, thanks.
Mr. Reel?
Thank you, honor. As long as this, as long as this is just, I guess, on direct annexation, I'm going to vote against that, but I will, if I may, save my, I guess, two cents worth, anyway. We have provide, and it is our ordinance that are to be part and parcel of the city to provide its services. I do believe that we have done that in the, have in the past, provided services to different entities that are not in the city of Wisconsin Rapids and still are not to this day. I'm speaking on behalf of the intra-governmental agreement, of which we can't do tonight, but that is something that has been on the table or mentioned or brought up for over a year. This annexation probably should have been part and parcel and taken care of before the hangar was built. We had to, the commission had to, everybody had to know that the services were going to have to go in. Through with the intra-governmental agreement, and there's been plenty of time, even though it could be a lengthy process to do, like I said, it's been a year and more since that was brought up. The commission has seen fit to not go that route. They have put us on a one course, flight to disaster, and that's annexation. And that's where we're back again tonight. They've had a year and more that through their attorney could have came up with an agreement to present to this council of what we could do. They did not choose that route, and they still are not choosing that route. And I think we should still, just because of that, say no, too. The added costs, obviously, the four communities, I guess, would bear, but the added cost goes to the commission. There is an option that we could probably look at, and that's making, this would be another exception, that we provide the services and we see how that goes, and we charge the commission for the sewer and water rates, for the installation, and that after a period of time, maybe a couple of years or whatever, we see, do we really have to annex it? We've done this in the past, to my knowledge, anyway. And I think we could again, and in this chance through government, intergovernmental agreement, and which could be even more broad than involving just the airport. The simplest way, and I've said it at meetings previously, the simplest way to do it is There has been discussion from some members. In fact, originally, I think, if my memory is right, the town of Grand Rapids, over a year ago, voted against it at the commission meeting. So, I don't believe it's always been unanimous from the communities. And there has been those in the, in a particular community, for sure, that affected. They're not losing tax money by it and that, but it's, I guess, somewhat of a pride of ownership or whatever. But just however it got done, and nobody can seem to find any paperwork, however it was done, is that the terminal has received service for many years and I don't believe it's part of the city and that it probably should be back sewer and water rates that we looked at and that to go back to collect, and that should be billed to the commission to pay. And I think that, however, and I think this will probably pass tonight, I'm going to vote against it, but I think with that, to make sure that the commission is paying the sewer and water rates if this does go through and is installed, that this doesn't somehow just fall upon the taxpayers of Wisconsin Rapids. This has to be the commission that pays for it. The commission should pay to install it, the whole thing. So, that's, I think, most of what I have to say. I think I've said probably all of it before. I know a quarter million dollars is what I think the figure was that they threw out of installing a well. Obviously, to provide city services and that is, I think, a lot cheaper than that. And, but I think we, I think the bullet was missed, at least that it was not looked at, to have an intergovernmental agreement to see what could be done. In this case, then, I think that actually it could have maybe been a broader case, a thing that we could have looked at to do, maybe, but this sure is a place where it would fit and just, I think, that make sure the right entity is, which involves the different communities, but that the right entity gets billed for what is done, so. And if a well was put in, the commission would build, they would get the bill for the well, so either way, so, that's all, thank you.
So, we have a motion and a second to approve the annexation of the hangar property at Alexander Field. It needs a two-thirds vote, so six votes, or six a's to pass. So, with that, cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven ayes, one nay.
Okay, and next item for business is, consider the adoption actions of the planning commission at its meeting held on April 6, 2020. And I have that report. Members present are on file in the city clerk's office. The meeting was called order at 4:00 PM. The first item was to approval of the report of the November 18, 2019 Planning Commission meeting. Motion by Wesley, seconded by Bray, to approve the report. That motion carried five a's, zero nays. Item two is Bullseye Golf Club Extraterritorial CSM requested by Certified Survey MAP approval for the creations of lots, three lots, and one outlot within the town of Grand Rapids. The subject property is located at 2800 Wood, or sorry, Ridge Wood Trail, parcel ID 0701048. There is a motion by Burkhardt, seconded by Bray, to approve the Bullseye Golf Club Extraterritorial CSM located at 2800 Wood Trail Trail. That motion carried four a's and zero nays with Wesley abstaining. Item three was Plan 20-0121, Ark Central, Inc., representing the business owner, request for site plan review and construct, or to review to construct a cafe building with a drive-through at 3820 A Street South, parcel ID 3413806. It was moved by Burkhardt, seconded by Hanson, to approve the plan with several conditions that are on file in the clerk's office. That motion carried five a's, zero nays. Item four is Plan 20-0146, Lucky's on Second LLC, request for architectural review to perform a facade improvement to the building at 126 Second Street North, parcel ID 3408139, which falls within the downtown design overlay district. Motion by Burkhardt, seconded by Wesley, to approve plan, to approve the plan with conditions that are on file in the clerk's office, and that motion carried five a's, zero nays. Item five is Plan 19-0938, Community Development, discussion on the new sign ordinance, Chapter 46 of the municipal code, Community Development Director Review. The proposed signed plan was reviewed and discussed. Item six is Plan 20-0155, Community Development, discussion on amending the zoning ordinance, Chapter 11 of the municipal code, to define and incorporate mobile vending use within zoning district. The zone, zoning ordinance related to incorporating motor, mobile vending use was reviewed and discussed. Item seven, adjournment by Burkhardt, seconded by Wesley, to adjourn, that motion carried four zero, meeting adjourned at 5:17. With that, I'll submit it for your approval.
I'll make a motion to approve.
So, we have a motion by Mr. Zerflu and seconded by Mr. Coath. Any discussions? With that, please cast your ballots. Mr. Reel?
One more time. It's probably not anything to, or, again, it's something that'll pass the council here this evening, but for my two cents, last two cents, maybe a nickel that I started with, that in some of these, it just seems to me that there are plans, but they're really not plans that may be far along, or far enough along, because I think if we look through one or two of these items, is that a lot of the final thing is left up to the Community Development Department to act upon. Now, they may make it sound like they're miniscule, small items to be resolved, and maybe to most people they are, but I just hope that we're not giving, again, way more of the authority that the council does have. And I think in the past that the planning commission has given way too much of their authority away. And, you know, when I see in there that, and I did request that the meeting actually not be held because of the, some of the things that I'm saying here this evening and that it was going to be done by remote and that, to me, a remote conference can be held, but it's not the most advantageous, the best way to conduct the business, at least when you're going to have, hopefully, discussion on different items. When I see in there that about all permits through the city and that other jurisdictions have to, have to be met, well, obviously, that does, but then you see in there, and I think those that know where the location is, and I'm not saying that it wouldn't be granted, but, and such as the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, shall be obtained. I do know in the past... I do know in the past that that has been something that has been talked about by different ones, even realtors have questioned the ability of that being saleable property. In the past, that's why some wanted to just store, store items on that property. Now, I'm not trying to say we can't, that the sale shouldn't go through and that, but I think we've just, this may be another situation of us giving the okay without everything, all the cards being put on the table of what we're playing with. And so that's, I think, all I have to say. It's, I think, along with the thing that, when I did request that the meeting be put off, is that there was a timeliness effect of that, and I assume maybe that has to do with the purchasing of the property and that type of stuff, but to me, I would have hoped that some of this at least would have been looked into, you know, and obviously not maybe got the, got the permits, but that they should have a good idea if, say, the DNR has any questions about it. So that's, I think, that's all I really have for this, but I think it's, for us as the council members, keep in mind that, and there are a couple of items I could mention that I think where the Planning Commission, I think, has, did fail us and things, and by going along with, I think, going along with that, and so I guess I'll just bring it up one more time, that the Planning Commission is very important, a very important commission, which I think that the commission, and Jay, I believe, you're in, and beyond that, that it's very important that the commission members get the booklet and whatever of what their duties are and what to follow, which I don't think has ever really probably been provided to the commission, but I think it's something that we're way past due on, and that, and that should be also done, so, and I guess it'd be somewhat of training for the Planning Commission to actually go through, so. Nothing, and that's nothing against the Community Development Department, but I just think it's, there are things that is getting left to them that, as we are presented with this to pass or not pass, that there should be more of a, to me, a finite, finite decision that's, or, plan that's there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reom. With, there's no other further discussion, we have a motion and a second to adopt the report. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight A's, zero N's.
Our next item of business is to consider adoption of the action of the Standing Committee of the common council, and my question to you is, do the old chairpersons read the reports, or do the new chairpersons read the reports? Technically, maybe the old chairperson, since they're going to request adoption of that action, maybe? Okay, so our first, first item is Finance and Property held March 3, 2020. Mr. Coth?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just so everyone knows that this was the original meeting from March 3, and the date on here reported to council is March 17, but no action was taken on that, on that day, so that should probably be changed to April 21. With that, the Property and Finance Committee met at 4:45 P.M. on Tuesday, March 3, in the first-floor conference room. We had Alder Person Kellogg sitting in for Alder Person Blazer, and Alder Person Reom sitting in for Alder Person Catna. List of others in attendance is on file with the clerk's office. Item number two was, consider a referral from Chief Young for an AFG grant submission. It was moved by Reom and seconded by Kellogg to approve the AFG grant application for $165,728 with a city match of $7,891. Motion carried. Item number three was, consider a referral from Chief Young to waive ambulance bills for end-of-life patients whose bills are denied. It was moved by Coth, seconded by Reom, to waive ambulance bills for end-of-life patients that are denied by Medicare, Medicaid, or private insurance. Attachment number one, motion carried. Item number four was, consider a recommendation from statewide services to deny a claim to Mr. Cadena for damages lost on his personal property. It was moved by Coth, seconded by Kellogg, to deny the claim for Mr. Cadena for damages, loss of his personal property. Motion carried. Item number five, consider a recommendation from statewide services to deny a claim to Mr. Simonson for damages to his vehicle. It was moved by Coth, seconded by Reom, to deny the claim for Mr. Simonson to do damage to his vehicle. Motion carried. Item number six, request, consider a request to increase the construction service contract with MSA for the East River Bank Phase II project by $12,500. It was moved by Reom, seconded by Kellogg, to approve an increase in construction service contract with MSA for the East River Bank Phase II project by $8,197.25. Attachments number two and three, motion carried. Item number seven was discussion regarding special assessments and looking into possible alternate methods of paying for public improvements. The committee reviewed and discussed the scope of the special, of a special assessment study. Attachment number four, no action was taken. Item number eight was, consider a special events application from the Wood County Health Department for a downtown farmer's market to be held on Thursdays and Saturdays from June 4 to October 31, 2020, on First Avenue South, from West Grand Avenue to Goggan Streets, pending zoning permit approval. It was moved by Coth, seconded by Reom, to hold this item over. Motion was withdrawn. It was moved by Reom, seconded by Coth, to request the applicant consider different options for the location of the farmer's market. That does not include the closing of streets. Motion carried. Item number nine was, consider a temporary Class B beer, Class B wine picnic license for Assumption Catholic Schools Incorporated, located at 445 Chestnut Street, for an Assumption Spring Musical Dinner Show to be held on April 2, 2020, from 5:30 P.M. to 10:00 P.M. It was moved by Coth, seconded by Reom, to approve the temporary Class B beer, Class B wine picnic license for Assumption Catholic Schools Incorporated, located at 445 Chestnut Street, for an Assumption Spring Musical Dinner Show to be held on April 2, 2020, from 5:30 P.M. to 10:00 P.M. Motion carried. Item number 10 was audit of the bills. It was moved by Coth, seconded by Kellogg, to approve check number 2657 to 3082. Motion carried. Item number 12 was beverage operator licenses. It was moved by Coth, seconded by Kellogg, to approve beverage operator licenses. Motion carried. Item number 12 was to set the next meeting date, the next Finance and Property Committee meeting date was scheduled for April 7 at 4:45 P.M. Item number 13 was adjournment. It was moved by Coth, seconded by Reom, to adjourn. Motion carried, and that meeting adjourned at 6:07 P.M. I'll pause a moment here in case anyone wants anything held out. Thad?
Yeah, I'd like to hold out item number six.
Any other items? All right, I will call for a motion to approve the report withholding item number six.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Reom, did you? Okay, you're good. So we have a motion and a second to adopt the balance of the report, holding out item number six. There's no other further discussion? Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight A's, zero N's.
Okay, regarding item number six, Mr. Kubaszek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As far as this goes, it was a request a month and a half ago, a request from MSA Engineering Firm in terms of increased work or more work on top of contracted work. And there was a request for, what, $12,500, and I think the committee went with, I guess, two-thirds of that, but there was supporting documentation, and supporting documentation for those fees is within this packet, or at least it was within the, it was submitted by, I think, was it in this, or? I don't remember where I read it, but it was submitted in one of the minutes, and I read through all the different email chains, and there was a pretty comprehensive amount of work that this firm did. And one of the things, I guess, in terms of having partners and hiring contractors, and I guess I've got a concern about not paying them with, for the work that they're doing. And the justifications, the amount of time for each of the different requests for payment on this, I think, in my eyes, were at least fair or justified with that. So, I mean, with this particular thing, I would actually like to kick it back to committee, or I would make a motion to have the committee review this again, because I think that there is some substantial information that may not have been presented, one, to the council, and two, to the committee with this. So therefore, that's what I'd like to do, is make a motion to have the committee reconsider.
We have a motion by Mr. Kubaszek. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second to send this item back to committee for their review. Mr. Zerflu?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Kubaszek, if I could just ask you, the amount approved by the committee was, was this $12,500 number, that was two-thirds of it, or two-thirds of what they, of the $12,500 was approved? Because I, I tend to agree with you. I would almost rather just approve paying the full amount, but I mean, if you think it should go back to committee, I won't, I mean, I won't fight you on that either.
Yeah, for clarification, I think someone said it out, yeah, it was the committee approved or sent it to the council floor of two-thirds of the $12,500.
Now, of course, I put the minutes away, but, all right. I didn't see that in there, that it was approved for less than what was being requested. I don't know if I just missed that, or if it didn't make it in the minutes.
Yeah, it should be under item number six. It'd be this, kind of the second paragraph, where it's $8,197.25.
Okay, thank you.
Mr., let's go with Mr. Reom and then see if Mr. Terry's available to explain why there was a, I can't remember, it's been a while since, and I can't remember why it wasn't the full amount or what had taken place.
I was just going to ask if Joe was listening, because he was there that evening, did go through and explain it. I do have, I don't know if this is a sheet that Thad might be referring to, with some comments that are on there about what they were asking for and why, and anyway, but I'll defer to Joe if he's on there, he can go over it again, so.
I am on the line. Everyone can hear me?
We can.
So the reason why staff, to make it short and sweet, the reason why staff did not recommend the full amount was because some of the work that MSA did was done not at the request of staff. Some of the things they did, they did in more detail that was requested, they prepared some, some documents and some diagrams that weren't requested, and in reviewing, and again, it was after the fact. We have a contract with MSA for this project. The contract includes the scope and a cost for those services. Many of the things that they requested fell within that scope, and at no time was there any suggestion that the work that was being done was outside the scope and would cost the city more. So as staff, we didn't feel it was appropriate to recommend paying for work that we didn't ask for, and that, under everybody's expectations, was being performed under the scope of the original contract. Few of the items, though, were, the settlement work behind the river wall that resulted in a change order. There's a document that was submitted to the committee that explains the, each request and the staff's recommendation, so that's why staff's recommending the payment of $8,197.25.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. Anyone else have any further questions for him? Uh, Mr. Kellogg?
No, I don't have questions. I was at the committee, you know, I was part of the committee there, and I have to give Joe a compliment, because he did push back, and from his rationale and explanation, because the contractor came on strong with, you know, they've been working with us, da-da-da-da-da, but they did work that we didn't request, per se, is what Joe just reiterated, and I thought Joe did a good job pushing back, so, but some of the work would be advantageous, so that's why I voted yes. Could go back for all I care, but you probably hear the same thing, but I think Joe did a good job, and, and they kept, they kept coming on strong, but I said, hey, you were paying two-thirds, and we're paying what was part of the, the whole contract in the first place, so that's just a comment I wanted to make.
Mr. Kubaszek?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And going through the council packet, I don't see it, but what, what I'm suggesting is, is that there's missing information here, and the, that firm, through the emails that were provided, and Steve, they gave, the gentleman gave you a packet of those specific emails that were sent to the previous mayor and also other staff members that requested work being done, or at least whether this is feasible or not. So I don't think we have enough information on the council floor for that. There was actual justification, not whether it merits specific $12,500, I'm not necessarily saying that, but there was email correspondences back and forth that were provided, that I don't see them here, and I read through them, and there was some compelling conversations that although it wasn't explicitly said, saying, hey, give us a change order, a direct amount for this, but it was, is it feasible to, speaking about the river wall thing, and legitimate work was done. So, I mean, it, this is why I want to kick it back to committee, because we need to definitely talk about that. If that's the case where misinformation is being provided, or no information or wrong information is being provided, I don't think we can vote on this tonight.
Mr. Coth?
I know that at the committee meeting, we, we discussed this, and Joe had brought up a lot of points. That is correct. I was given some emails after the meeting that I did turn over to get disseminated amongst Alder Persons. I would assume that those would have gotten sent out, or if, I don't know if people have gotten a chance to see them or not, but listening to Thad tonight, I, same reason I voted no on the annexation back in February, because I want to make, give everything a good look to make sure that I'm making the proper decision. I'd use that same standard weight to agree with Thad, that if he feels that this deserves a second look, I would have no problem sending this back to committee to give it a second look, to make sure that we do have all the information before we make a decision.
So with that, if there's no further discussion, we have a motion by Mr. Kubaszek, seconded by Mr. Bemke, to send this back to committee for a second review. by Mr. Bemke, to send this back to committee for a second review. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, six ayes, two nays.
So, that item will be referred back to Finance and Property. We have a second report, I believe, held on April 16th. Mr. Coth?
Thank you, Your Honor. The Property and Finance Committee meeting was held by remote video conferencing on Thursday, April 16th, 2020, at 4:45 PM. The public was invited to listen by audio meeting. All members of the Property and Finance Committee were present. Alderperson Coth and Alderperson Blazer were present in the first-floor conference room of City Hall. Alderperson Catnaugh hearing via video conference. List of others attending is on file with the clerk. Item number one was called to order. Chairperson Coth called the meeting order at 4:45 PM. Item number two was consider a special events application request from the Wood County Health Department for a downtown farmer's market to be held on Thursdays and Saturdays from June 4 to October 31, 2020, on First Avenue South, from West Grand Avenue to Goggins Streets, to include street closures. So, moved by Catnaugh, seconded by Coth, to approve the special events application request from, from the Wood County Health Department for a downtown farmer's market to be held on Thursdays and Saturdays from June 4 to October 31, 2020, on First Avenue South, from West Grand Avenue to Goggins Streets, to enclose, to include street closures. Motion carried. Item number three was consider a request from the Public Works Department to purchase a taggy equipment trailer. It was moved by Coth, seconded by Catnaugh, to purchase a 45,000-pound capacity double-jack trailer from Roland Equipment for $27,878. Motion carried. Item number four was consider a request from the Public, Department of Public Works to purchase a portable hot water pressure washer. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Catnaugh, to purchase a B5/2000 portable oil-fired pressure washer from Beaver, Wisconsin, for $7,795. Motion carried. Item number five was consider a request from the Public Works Department to purchase a rotary wheel balancer. It was moved by Catnaugh, seconded by Coth, to purchase a rotary wheel balancer from Carlisle's Tools Napa Auto Parts for $8,831.62. Motion carried. Item number six was consider a request from the Public Works Department to purchase a manhole repair tool from Mr. Manhole. It was moved by Coth, seconded by Catnaugh, to approve the purchase of a manhole repair tool from Mr. Manhole Six Shooter for $27,978.53. Alderperson withdrew his motion with consent from Catnaugh, second. It was moved by Coth, seconded by Catnaugh, to purchase, to approve the purchase of the manhole repair tool from Mr. Manhole Six Shooter for $25,503.53. Motion carried. Item number seven was consider a request from the Public Works Department to purchase a Trax Skid Steer. It was moved by Coth, seconded by Blazer, to purchase a Cat 259D3 Skid Steer from Fabic of Wassa for $48,148. Motion carried. Number eight was beverage operator licenses. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Catnaugh, to approve the beverage operator licenses. Contingent upon two applicants, two applicants were going to have theirs approved contingent on their court obligations being paid in full. Motion carried. Alderperson Coth abstained from that vote. Item number nine was audit of the bills. It was moved by Coth, seconded by Catnaugh, to approve check number 3083 to 3321. Motion carried. Item number 12 was to set the next meeting date. Regularly scheduled meeting for the Property and Finance Committee meeting was not set. A meeting time will be considered after the council meeting on April 21st, 2020. Item number 13 was adjournment. It was moved by Coth, seconded by Blazer, to adjourn. Motion carried. The meeting adjourned at 5:38 PM. I'll pause and see if anyone wants anything held out.
Yeah, I'd like to hold out item two.
All right, item two. And I will hold out item number eight, because I will not vote on that item. So, I will make a motion to accept the balance of the report, withholding items number two and eight.
So, we have a motion. Is there a second? It was seconded by Mr. Catnaugh. Mr. Zerflu?
Cancelled, sorry.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second to adopt the balance of the report, holding out items two and eight. There's no further discussion, please cast your ballots, when the clerk's ready.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
So, we might as well start with item two. Mr. Raume?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not to, not to belabor the point, but, or item that has to do with farmer's market, and that was on your first report, Alderperson Coth, and that it was, not referred, but it was, you know, asked that they could look at different locations to have it, than on the street, to have street closures. So, we wouldn't have to have street closures. It was mentioned newly reacquired city parking lot that we got back, that we took back in back of the old Tribune Building, possibly doing it there. Parks were mentioned, in particular, I mentioned my park in, in my ward, District Robinson Park, where streets wouldn't have to be closed. There is parking, obviously, in the park there, something like that, there's parking in the park, there is on-street parking for the park. Plenty of room to do things. Also, at this point in time, we don't know where we are going to be as far as social distancing, and hopefully, things are getting better. But I, as it gets better, I don't know that we can jump right back into, full-fledged, back into opening everything up grand scale as they once were, as, obviously, in my feelings and the medical experts say that, you know, we're going to have to go through testing and all this other stuff, and gradually go back into whatever we want the new, our new life to be. And obviously, the downtown along Second, First Avenue doesn't, does not give any space there for social distancing. I think it was mentioned by the, I think Kristi was there from the Health Department, Wood County, did mention that this, I do believe, was the word she said, was this is an essential activity to take place, but it'd also have to fall within the guidelines of whatever rules were under at that point in time. So, I really think that, in long term, anyway, even without COVID-19 that we're enduring and going through now, I do think that really, something like this is that it should be looked at as, you know, to see what there'd be for a permanent location, to have that. And I know some probably would say First Avenue would be the permanent location. I also know at the meeting there, people were there for other items in this, I do believe, but people who did speak up, I think unanimously, probably spoke in favor of not having it in this location. So, I just think that, and it was also mentioned, you know, how much is the county going to continue running this and that? They're going to be involved to a degree, but I think as I get out of it, they would somewhat, they want to turn it over to somebody else, and to take charge of it. And actually, it was also even mentioned of a full-time person, or whatever, to do something like this, to take care and run it. So, wherever we are due this year, it'll be, I know it's something people like, I realize that down on the riverbank is part of their thing to do that. But I also think there's other places in the city that we can, that we could be looking at doing things, and in a case like this, it'd be to not closing streets off, which, even though it may not be a gigantic sum of money, but it also is, it does cost money to close the streets off. It costs money to, for the recycled barrels and that, that are put out there, the refuse barrels that are put out there. So, it's a, even though it is a thing that a lot of people want to continue to have, it is something that is a cost to the city, and it is a, something, in this case, it is something that the people that are doing it are doing it to make money off of. And so, I think that this, this could be, but obviously, June is approaching. We don't know what that's going to leave us with, or how we can do things yet, but, so I realize why they want to move on this now, but I'm also somewhat saddened in that I don't think that there was any look that was given to having it in a different location than where it's at. And that's what the recommendation was from the committee at the March 3rd meeting, if I could find it quick here, I think that's where it was, anyway. But that was for them to look at a different location, to have that, I think they might have, to request the applicant to consider different options for the location of farmer's It wasn't brought back that other things were looked at, and that they weren't acceptable. So, it just, and that's why the item was held over, so, but that's neither here nor there, I guess, but it's, I guess I would encourage the farmer's market, those involved in that, if there is a way to look at a different location, because I think there are others, and it may not be just the park that I mentioned, or other parks, or other locations that may, it may be advantageous to actually have, and actually, maybe more people would show up. One of the, and it's a Thursday and Saturday, just to, and I also see why, so I'll throw, I'll put that, the Thursday happens to be, at least has been in the past, the same day as Lunch by the River. So, there is somewhat of a crowd that does go down there for that, so, you know, not slighting that in the least, but for those that may want to do both things, maybe there'd be a chance for one of them to change the date that they're having one of their events on, and one could be on Tuesday and one on a Thursday. Farmer's Market's also on Saturday, so maybe something could be arranged in that sense, and a way to do it, too. So, I, people do want it and that, so, you know, I'm not voting against to say not to be there, I just wish we, that they would have come back, that they had looked at other locations, and I don't think they did, so that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Raume. Mr. Catnaugh?
Thank you. So, just to Mr. Raume's comments, just wanted to know, I'm not against them looking for a new location, but in terms of this year, this is from June 4th to October 31st, the Health Department expressed at the Finance and Property Committee meeting that they didn't have sufficient time to plan to move to a new area. They need to coordinate with vendors, they need to notify the public. These vendors are integral part of our community, they do make a profit off of it, but that money comes back into our community. They're going to practice social distancing, just as it's done at other supermarkets, other chains owned throughout the community, and this is something that is great for the community. People love it. It's healthy, it's a way to gather, and if they're doing it as safe as any other place that sells food or vegetables, or things that are sold at the social supermarket, I don't see why we can't continue. So, I'm, I'm looking forward to this. I know they posted something on Facebook already, which may have been premature, but it seems like the community is looking forward to it as well, so I'm in full support of this, and hopefully, we can move forward with this, and then discuss different venues next year.
Thank you, Mr. Catnaugh. Mr. Zerflu?
I would just like to point out that since the County Health Department is the applicant in this case, with the current state of events, the local health officer is basically like the authority. So, if, I guess, Mr. Raume, under Chapter 252 of the Wisconsin statutes, the local health officer, as part of the Health Department, actually has a responsibility to prohibit public gatherings when it's in the public's interest. So, I'm not sure if that was a question or not, I just saw that offered, is all. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zerflu. I apologize, I did not ask for a motion before we decided or began our discussion, so I guess at this point, if somebody would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Catnaugh made a motion to approve item number two, and seconded by Mr. Kellogg. Is there any further discussion? With that, I would ask that you cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven ayes, one nay.
All right. Next item would be the Public Works Committee.
Are we, head number eight outstanding yet?
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Yes, item number eight, the beverage operator license.
Yep, because I have one in there myself that's up for approval. I'll let somebody else make a motion, and second, and abstain from the vote.
Mr. Kubitschak made the motion. And we have a second by Mr. Catnaugh. We have a motion and a second, unless there's some discussion needed on the beverage operator license, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven ayes, one abstention.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Coth. The next item would be the Public Works Committee report from March 3rd. Mr. Kubitschak?
The Public Works Committee met on Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020, in the first-floor conference room at City Hall. Kubitschak, Raume, and Verginsky were present, others attending are on file in the clerk's office. Item number one, called to order, the meeting was called to order at 6:17 PM. Review and consider revision of the Public Works Special Assessment Process and Procedures. Motion by Raume, seconded by Verginsky, to proceed with a special assessment study consistent with the scope presented. Motion carried, three to zero. Item number three, review and consider approval of a preliminary resolution declaring intent to levy special assessments for permanent street surfacing, concrete curb and gutter, defective sidewalk, concrete driveway approaches, and sanitary and water services for 18th Avenue South from Russell Street to West Grand Avenue. Motion by Raume, seconded by Kubitschak, to adopt a preliminary resolution declaring intent to levy special assessments for permanent street surfacing, concrete curb and gutter, defective sidewalk, concrete driveway approaches, and sanitary and water services for 18th Avenue South from Russell Street to West Grand Avenue. Motion failed, one to two, with Kubitschak and Verginsky voting in the negative. Item number four, review and consider modifying the Engineering Department's policy for streetlights. Motion by Raume, seconded by Verginsky, to modify the Engineering Department policy for streetlights as presented. Motion carried, three to zero. Item number five, review and discuss the USDOT Fiscal Year 2020 Build Transportation Grants Program. The 2020 build grant program was discussed. Item number six, Director of Public Works report, was item number six, the DPW report was reviewed. Item number seven, review referral list, the referral list was reviewed. Item number eight, adjournment. Motion by Raume, seconded by Verginsky, to adjourn. Motion carried, three to zero. Meeting was adjourned at 5:38 PM. carried three to zero, meeting was adjourned at 7:47 PM. And with that, I will entertain a motion for approval.
So we have a motion by Mr. Kubitschak.
I apologize, I will make the motion for approval on this, sorry.
A motion by Mr. Kubitschak, is there a second? So a motion and a second, and I guess we didn't call for any items to be held out. Mr. Zerflu?
I second that, number three also.
So is everyone okay with holding out item number three? Any objection? Any other items need to be held out? So we have a motion and a second. Thank you, everybody, keep me on course. So a motion by Mr. Kubitschak, seconded by Mr. Veneman, to adopt the balance of the report, holding out item number three. There's no other discussion, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Your choice. Mr. Zerflu?
I didn't, I rather would hear from Mr. Terry, I guess if he's still on the line. I don't like special assessments, but at the same time, that's, that is how we operate now, and hopefully we can change that, but projects still need to get done, in my opinion. But I would like to hear, I guess, if there's thoughts on why the project shouldn't go. That road is in need of replacement, as are many roads in the city.
Anyone else like to speak? Mr. Raum?
I would, but if Joe's still on the line, if he, Joe Terry, if he'd want to say something first and then a comment after, if he wants to go through his.
Mr. Mickelson says yes.
I am on the line.
Perfect, we can hear you.
Okay. So the 18th Avenue project, as was described in committee, is a project that is requested by all of our utilities, and it has street needs, so it, it fits our perfect project description. And it has been on the capital improvement plan for several years. We're planning on, or we were planning on reconstructing this in 2021. We don't currently have any alternative projects, and we don't currently have plans or survey work for any other project to replace it. So if we choose not to do this project, it does put the city in a bit of a bind, primarily because of the planning that's gone into it so far, and the financing for construction projects and how financing works for covering the costs of our equipment use and the staff that performs the installations. And so we also have been receiving phone calls and questions from property owners, and we're really getting to a point where, you know, if we're going to move forward with the project, and it would likely start within a year, we really need to communicate with the property owners and work with them on the plans.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. Mr. Raum?
Yeah, and, and just to touch on, I guess, a couple things that are there, it's, the assessments is being looked at on how to do that. That isn't complete yet, but this is a project that, as Joe said, has been on the books for a number of years. It's also a project with water and light. And I'll just look at some notes here, is that it's, again, it's a sore in water main parts, so that's over 100 years old. The majority of the street was last constructed, was constructed in 1967. It warrants to be rebuilt. It would be, it's to do, you know, underground, on top of ground, to reconstruct the street. It's something that's long overdue, and also, as mentioned, we do have a lot of, a lot of streets in need of repair and that, but this is an ideal one, and I think it's, it's something that, for us to act on in a timely manner, is that it's something that we should move forward with this evening and, you know, go ahead and, and pass that. I don't think we had a motion to do that either, to do anything with that, did we? I meant, I guess, to start with, if I may, to make a motion now that I'd move that we pass the preliminary resolution and for Russell Street to West Grand Avenue for, on 18th Avenue South, make sure I got the right streets there listed. And, and so I'll move for that.
So we have a motion by Mr. Raum and seconded by Mr. Koth. Is there anybody else that would like to add any additional information?
What was the, I missed what you said about reviewing the special assessments when you read that off earlier. Where, where are we at on the special assessment review report?
Mr. Terry still around? Is Mr. Terry still on?
Sure. So, so the special assessment review was just approved just moments ago, that was brought to the committee, and, and that was item two on the agenda, and that's to review the process and bring some information back to the committee relating to different methods of funding projects, including and excluding special assessments. And so we'll, we did begin some work on that, but with the council's approval, then we can, you know, roll forward without any hesitation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. Any further discussion? With that, I call for a vote.
Motion carried, seven ayes, one abstention. I'm sorry, one nay. Seven ayes, one nay.
Could I make a comment? Okay. With regard to special assessments, I know that's going to be studied, and I kept thinking, I drove up and down 18th Street and other streets and so forth, and we've had this discussion about sidewalks for the last year, year and a half or what have you. And I think there's some areas where you need sidewalks on both sides of the street, just because of the traffic, location near schools, et cetera, et cetera. But there are, I believe in sidewalks because of handicap, young children and so forth, but there are areas that may not need sidewalks on both sides of the street. So as we review different assessments, my thought would be that in those areas where it's not essential on both sides, that it's determined at one point in time, it would be placed on the south side and, or east side of the road, or north side and west side of the road, and maybe the city installs that, but those people that have the sidewalk would maintain it. And it's just something to think about, because you could have handicapped people in that area, if it's on one side of the road where it's not essential to have it on both, they could cross at a driveway and, and get onto the other side, or a young child getting on the other side. But as people deliberate as the possibilities, I think that's a possibility. So if it's on east side, west side, north side, east side, whatever the side of the road is, determine ahead of time, so that no matter wherever the road goes in, there's not a debate because people don't want it on their side of the road, but then they maintain it. So some, I just wanted to throw that out as a consideration, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Next report would be the Human Resource Committee held March 10th, 2020, and I can read that one. The Human Resource Committee met, City, Wisconsin Rapids, at 4:45 on Tuesday, March 10th, in the first floor conference room. List of attendees are on file in the city clerk's office. Meeting was called to order at 4:46 PM. First item was to consider for approval proposed changes to longevity and personal time policies and procedures as a result of ASME Local 1075 DPW not recertifying. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Zerflu, to allow those DPW employees who currently receive longevity payments to be given the option to elect to either continue to receive longevity payments or receive two additional personal days off. This election must be made by April 1st, 2020, and is, and is irrevocable. If any employee does not timely elect an option, the employee will cease receiving longevity and will receive the additional two personal days. That motion carried three ayes, zero nays. See longevity revised longevity, see attached revised longevity and personal time policies. Item three is consider for approval staffing levels and setting wages for seasonal positions at the aquatic facility. It was moved by Zerflu, seconded by Kellogg, to approve the general staffing levels and wages, wage rates for aquatic facility positions as presented in the material that were provided. That motion carried three ayes and zero nays. Item four is consider for approval an increase in wastewater interim, intern rate from $12 to $14 per hour. That motion, motion was made by Zerflu, seconded by Kellogg, to increase the wastewater intern rate from $12 hours, $12 per hour to 14 per hour. That motion carried three ayes, zero nays. Item five was consider approval, approval proposals for recruitment services for hiring a human resources director. Motion was made by Kellogg, seconded by Blazer, to accept the proposal from Charles River Group LLC for recruitment services for the HR director position. For the fees proposed, that motion carried three ayes, zero nays. Item six is consider for approval revision to the multimedia coordinator job description requiring minimum qualifications. Motion by Blazer, seconded by Zerflu, to approve the revisions to the multimedia coordinator job description to require a four-year degree or equivalent education and experience. That motion carried three ayes, zero nays. Item seven is consider for approval moving the street supervisor's position from grade 11 to grade 12 pay classification. Motion by Zerflu, seconded by Kellogg, for, to approve moving the super, street supervisor's position from grade 11 to grade 12 pay classification. That motion carried three ayes, zero nays. There was an update on the employee recruitment, interim HR Director Deb Poggle gave that update. Item nine is consider for approval the creation of a design engineer position, approve the job description and compensation, and approve the posting of that position. Consider rescinding action from last month's, month regarding the filling of design engineer near one position. Motion by Kellogg, seconded by Zerflu, to rescind the action from last month regarding the filling of a design engineer one position, to approve the creation of a design engineer position, approve the job description and compensation, post the position, that motion carried three ayes, zero nays. Item 10 is consider affirming the IT manager as a department head position and affirming the elimination of the position of Director of Information and Technology. Consider confirming Tyler Mickelson as the mayor's appointment to the IT manager position. That motion was made by Blazer, seconded by Kellogg, to affirm the IT manager as a department head position and affirm the elimination in position of Director of Information and Technology, to confirm Tyler Mickelson as the mayor's appointment to the IT manager position. That motion carried three ayes, zero nays. Item 11 is an open session, motion was made by Blazer, seconded by Zerflu, to go in the closed session under Section 19.81, Part 1, Part 1E of the Wisconsin State Statutes, which reads deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specific or other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. A roll call vote was taken, all members voted in affirmative, and motion carried. In closed session, the committee received an update and discussed strategies regarding negotiations and possible interest arbitration with International Association of Firefighters Local 425. The committee did not come out of closed session. Motion was made by Blazer, seconded by Kellogg, to adjourn in closed session, motion carried in a meeting adjourned at 6:10, and I will leave the motion to somebody else.
I'd like to hold out number two.
And I'll make a motion to approve withholding number two.
So we have, well, we need a motion to approve the report if there's no other items?
I'll, I'll move to approve withholding number two and? Number two.
Oh, okay.
Right, I made a motion to approve the report, but withholding item number two.
Okay. No problems. We have a motion by Mr. Zerflu, seconded by Mr. Koth. To approve the report while holding out item number two. Is there any further discussion on that balance of a report? Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
I can't remember who, was it Mr. Raum? Oh, Mr. Kellogg, thank you.
We have a concern with regard to, you want a response by April 1st, 2020, so we would have, my suggestion would be to change it to May, June 1st. And then also, since it's irrevocable, and some people may be at home because of the virus, et cetera, that I would suggest that it be, we be proactive and send something to the residents so that everyone has a chance either to accept it or not to accept it with the longevity, rather than assuming that they'll contact us. So it's just being proactive to make sure everybody's on board or not on board with, with it. So. That's it.
Okay. So, go ahead.
Well, the rest of it, it's, it's just, it's just a procedure. It states it's irrevocable. Some people now, because of the virus, may not be at home, and they may not be cognizant of this issue, because it's an important issue for them. I'd like to have a letter sent, so have them, for us to be proactive that they either accept or don't accept, so no one's left out and didn't know the situation.
Okay, we can have HR department handle that. Perfect.
All right.
So we have a motion by Mr. Kellogg. Is there a second? Sorry. Does everybody catch the motion? We have a second by Mr. Raum, or Mr. Bemke. Is there any further clarification or discussion? So with that, nothing further, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mickelson, we do have your temporary nameplate for council here, so you're all set. Congratulations on being named officially as a department head. Our next item of business is reports of other committee, commission boards, and department reports. What are your wishes?
Make a motion to accept the balance of the reports.
We have a motion by Mr. Koth, and a second by Mr. Zerflu to adopt the balance of those reports. Any further discussion? Mr. Kellogg?
I'm on the, I represent the council on the McMillan Library, and I just wanted to be known and make you know that- that over the last couple of years, they've been working on a building campaign where they want to remodel the second floor, the adult area, and it's fantastic. It's a campaign. It's $2 million, but they want to put a large acre space up there. That's an activity where people get, young people or adults get used to the latest electronics and so forth, three-dimensional graphene and so forth. They also will put a bit, a larger bank of computers because it's used by the community a great deal. They're going to put conference rooms because that's a challenge where people want to meet, and where do you meet? There's going to be relatively large conference room and five small ones. And new carpeting, new lighting, et cetera. So, it's a $2 million campaign, which probably depending upon the campaign and building, et cetera, it might, the, it might do come through, the finished product might be at the end of 2021. But the good news is, even though it's a $2 million campaign, there's $1 million that has been donated as matching funds. And there's $300,000 that has already been identified to match some of the $1 million. So, as a board member, I and the other board members are contacting businesses, et cetera. There's, there's naming rights, for example, of a person. There's a, there's a theater that they're going to remodel. And many people go to concerts every month. They go to movies on Mondays. I mean, it's used extensively. And so, I mean, to me, the library is the jewel of the city where children, children area, adult area, people that need use of a computer, but they can't access one, is just phenomenal. So, I just thought I'd make it public, and if anybody that's listening that wants to contact me, I'll give you my telephone number, 715-570-4922. I'll be happy to discuss it. And I'll place in your mailboxes the packet of what it looked like. I'll do it this week. The board needs to have matching funds by June 15th, so it's approximately two months. But the matching funds don't have to be paid for two years. So, we're going to some large businesses and so forth because it's a write-off, and they might be able to commit it now, but not have to pay for it for two years. So, it's an exciting time, and I thought you should be aware now. And we, they postponed it because they didn't know all the details, and everything worked out. And if we get this matching funds, well, the matching funds really hit home, and the $300,000 that right now we have for matching is fantastic. So, now as a board member and other board members, we're contacting community members to see as we raise more. So, I thought I'd bring it to your attention, just so you know. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Kubitschak?
Thank you, Mr. Maron. Thank you, Mr. Kellogg, for sharing that. What a wonderful opportunity. I guess just for clarification for our purposes moving forward where we've got a new reorganization meeting. As far as these minutes go that we just approved, or there's a motion to approve these, is it, is it better to actually have a motion to have these minutes placed on file in the clerk's office rather than approving these minutes because these minutes have already been approved with other commissions and/or citizen committees? Is that, Ms. City Attorney, what is your opinion on that? Because if, if we're actually voting to approve something, is there some type of potential liability moving forward or assumed responsibility with this? And do we even have the authority to approve it, you know? But we do, we do have the authority to place it in, on file in the clerk's office.
Right. I mean, when you're, when you're approving minutes, it's, it's more so, does, is there any error in there? You're not, you're not necessarily reaffirming once again everything that you had approved at the previous meeting. Much the same as if someone was absent at that meeting, they could still approve, you know, that the meeting where the minutes were generated from the next month, they could still be involved in approving the minute. So, it's not, by approving the minutes, you're really just looking at them and making sure that there aren't any errors in, in the, the typing or the production of the minute. So, I, I, there, there isn't an issue with you continuing to approve the minutes, but it's, it's how, the language that's used, whether you're just placing them on file because you're, you're saying they're okay versus approving them. I mean, I think it's just kind of semantic. So, whatever you're comfortable with, with doing, I'd say.
Any further discussion? With that, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight ayes, zero nays.
So, with that, I'd like to thank and congratulate our new alderman. Thank Wisconsin Rapids Community Media for getting this all live tonight. And thank you to our new IT manager, Tyler Mickelson, for providing all the IT support behind the scenes to pull this meeting off. With that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. A motion by Mr. Kubitschak, seconded by Mr. Whoever hits their button first. Mr. Rayom, and Mr. Rayom would like to speak? Oh, okay. That was there. Sounds good. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor? Thank you very much. We are adjourned.